That work, which is really neat. Thank you to Heather Lindstad for getting those, kind of going around and getting those from the organizations. Facilities improvements, since I put these pictures together, more has taken place. If you were to come in right now and visit me in my office, you would see right down the hallway that the SIU doorway, which we've been talking about for quite some time, for the safety and security of the middle school, in particular from this side of the building, that's being put in. And so demolition, we're in the demolition phase right now. These pictures show demolition that's going on in other areas. Also, today was the first day, I believe, maybe the second day, but the first day of significant work that was done on the Stratton Road building that we are putting up for the facilities garage. We could scroll down a little bit, Nick, that would be great. So I'm hitting the topic areas that I've put in here. The curriculum instruction assessment, you'll hear a presentation tonight, so I don't need to spend a lot of time on that. But the conversation of the learning management system, the LMS, has been a large one within our strategic design. If you were to read through that, you would see some some language that would point us in the direction of using something like this. And I think tonight, hopefully, you'll be able to ask some, you know, listen, but ask some questions as well and see better why it is such an important tool to continue to help us to personalize learning for all students. We have a couple of retreats ahead of us. One for the admin and board this coming Thursday, and then next week for administration. And a lot of this, a lot of it, has to do with just some long-range planning and that we're doing this summertime and continuing to tighten that up. On Wednesday evening, we'll have the first meeting of the ad hoc committee that focuses on what's happening with school in the fall. I have not been given directly an official email by the Department of Education or the governor yet as to what their recommendations are from the state. It's coming a little bit later than we had anticipated. I have some notes that I was provided, and I have some other information that has been recently given to me from some of the members that were, that served on that committee. But these are pretty much the nine or 10 areas that they want us to focus on, which is communication, public health, physical school environment, certainly that's a large one, student, family, and educator wellness, that's another big one. Instruction. Basically, everyone knows that there's three basic scenarios of instruction. You either go fully remote, or you're in the building, or the campus anyway, and you have whatever protocols you need to have in place for health and wellness. And then you have a blended approach. And certainly, those are very broad, and how we will tackle that, we'll find out. One thing I have learned, however, especially, definitely through the years, but more so this past year, is that when we get together as a community and we figure out what the direction that is best for our students and our, and our teachers and our community is, that if we work together and we problem solve, we'll find the right solution. So I don't have a whole lot of apprehension about this. I'm excited for the opportunity to discuss and the dialogue. Certainly, July 8th, 15th, and 23rd, by the 23rd, want to have a recommendation to move forward. At the latest, we'll have some breakout sessions and small committee work that will happen in between those dates as well. So those are some big items that are taking place. As we, it can be summarized really into planning is the word. So we planned for the summertime to do something very different with our extended school year, our best camp, as well as our tutoring that's going on in the elementary schools. We've planned, we're planning with our retreats and with a curriculum instruction team to, you know, look at the LMS and then with our retreats, sorry, for future planning. And then planning for the fall. And there's just a lot of planning that's going in place. A lot of work is being done right now. Thank, big thanks to John Leclerc, who's our new facilities manager. And he has been working really hard on really organizing the cleaning processes for the district. And I mean, you know, we'll have more update on that later on. So that's what I have for now. If there are any questions or comments, I'll take those. Okay?
Righty, great. Thanks, Ruben. Um, okay, so we're on to the consent agenda. I need to move the minutes, both public and non, from the consent agenda, the 15th?
Are you pulling the 15th?
Pardon?
Are you pulling the 15th?
Yeah, June the 15th.
We also need to-
I have some changes. For nominations, we need to add Sarah Micheloni, ILC teacher, effective 8/17/20. And under resignations, Raymond Donnelly, JGS custodian, 6/30/20.
Okay, thank you. Laurel, did you have something?
Nope, Charlie, Charlie did it.
Okay, great. Anything, anyone else on the consent agenda? Any changes that need to take place before we vote on that?
Just a sec. We have new June 1 meeting minutes, right?
Yes, we do. The changes reflected, that was done out in the email. Maybe 2, 3 o'clock today.
Okay. Okay, they're, they're not on the website, but they are what were sent to the board this afternoon.
Did they not update?
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended with the June 1 meeting minutes as revised in this afternoon's email.
Second.
Thank you, Patty. And all those in favor, roll call vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Laurel?
Hi, yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. All right, it passes 7-0-0. Thank you. So now, we need to do the June 15th, public and non-public.
On the public, I have a change.
Okay.
Okay, under 1 versus public session. Third paragraph. I think there's a typo there.
All right, I have to look at this.
To join him in the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, I think that's what it should say.
I'm glad we made that change. I do apologize.
Totally missed that.
All right. All right, so I need a motion for the June 15th as amended.
I move accept the June 15th public and non-public as amended.
Second.
Thank you, Patty. All right, and I'll do the roll call vote. Let's start with Charlie.
Aye.
Thank you, Laurel.
Aye.
Thank you, Patty.
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yeah.
Thank you, and John?
Aye.
Thank you, and I abstain. So that, that passes 6-0-1. All right, next up. Um, we have the presentations. Yeah.
So the first presentation tonight is the risk management audit. This is something that by policy, Policy EI, the superintendent or designated, is supposed to be providing on an annual basis. This is something, after looking through policies through the year, has not been something that has been done on a regular basis. Last year, we did a little version of this, but not as extensive. And this one, I think, is more extensive. But I will say, not as complete as it needs to be still. As we, you'll, you'll see that through this presentation, or at least hear about that. But let's just kind of start off with the current risk management program. And what it means by this, when we talk about current risk management program, we're looking at the loss, joint loss committee, this first slide. And the joint loss committee has, over the last couple of years, certainly improved its practices, improved its note-taking. This was a little bit tougher every year. With that, certainly toward the end of the year as well, with the springtime and what all that took place, and there were no meetings during that timeframe. They were in the midst, the committee had decided that they needed to update the safety manual, and they were in the process of working on that, the joint loss safety manual. It, it stalled, so that work needs to continue on. But the joint loss committee did inspect each school during the wintertime and made recommendations to the principals. Many of those items were taken care of. Some of them, we needed to go back and look at to see whether they had been done or not, or what progress had been made. And so the principals did a great job in fixing the things that they could take care of. There were some other areas in the facilities that we needed to continue to work on. And so myself, Leslie, the principals this past summertime, especially because the joint loss committee could, was not, you know, in, was not functioning during the end of the spring and into the summer. We did basically a walk around and created a very large list of items that needed to be taken care of, some of which were safety areas, most of which were cleanliness needs. That certainly does tie into safety, as well as just some facilities upgrades that we needed to have, things like ceiling tiles and such. But all that information has been put into work orders, spreadsheets, and those spreadsheets have been provided to the new facilities manager. And he has been busily working on those and working with his staff to be able to accomplish all that. It's been actually, the efforts from these last two weeks have been quite exemplary, really, from the, the staff that is here and from John's leadership, which is great. That ties into the emphasis on facility cleaning, certainly, more than anything from the conversation of safety right now is just making sure that we are cleaning our facilities thoroughly. So not only doing the everyday cleaning that needs to take place, the vacuuming of floors, the washing of floors, the cleaning of bathrooms and such, but also deeper cleaning in those areas than perhaps we've been doing in the past, and some stronger sanitizing and disinfecting. So I can say that we have recently, we did an audit of all of our cleaning supplies, our materials, the products that we're using. We met with the company that has provided the majority of our chemicals or, you know, our green products that we have, and also the materials that we use. And we found out that certainly we are not doing things uniformly across the school district. In the schools, there are better practices in some schools and other schools. There are people using better equipment, like mops. So it's just really supplies, like different types of mop heads that are microfiber. And other places, they're still using mops that aren't that, and that's not a good practice. And so we have been ordering, basically making sure that everything is now standardized. That has not completely happened yet, but it is getting there. And this, and the tools are coming in as we speak. And then bathrooms. The administration at the middle high school, and myself and my assistant, used a touchless machine on one of the bathrooms. We were trying it out just to see if we could, see if there was a difference. It worked tremendously well. And it did not take long on some of these, I guess you would consider them gang bathrooms, larger group bathrooms. And we were able to get a lot of dirt, you know, off the floors, out of the toilets, underneath, everything, and not touch anything. So first of all, wanting to get a cleaner, more sanitized product, which would be the bathrooms, and then also do so without causing undue stress on, and injury possibly for our staff. For instance, having to constantly do repetitious motions, kneeling down on the ground to clean underneath, you know, toilet areas and so forth. So this system would allow for a lot of that just to stop happening. So every building is going to have one of those. So there'd be four of those that are being purchased, and we'll be training people on that. Also, in this age of needing to disinfect things and to do so in a quick and thorough manner, the electrostatic disinfecting systems are the newest things that are out there. They're certainly on back order, but we have ordered a handheld one and a backpack one for each school. So for the middle school, for the high school, for the two elementary schools as well, total of eight items there. And we did not get the large systems that roll on the floor because they, they were months and months and months away from being able to promise us those items. But these, we believe, will be sufficient for the, what we need in the fall. So we're excited about that. Lots of new things there. Once again, in summary, just standardizing, making sure that the practices, we're using our best practices, minimizing the repetitive motion for our employees, making it a more sanitizing, healthy environment for them to work as well as they make the environment more sanitized and healthy for us to all work in. So other new actions that have taken place, or are in the works, I suppose, is we did a, I already mentioned that Leslie, myself, went around, this was prior to John coming with all of the administrators in the schools. We had noticed an area that needed to be dealt with in a better way than in the chemical storage areas within our, within our high schools. This is common within schools to need to make sure that this is routinely visited, the practices that we have. And so we have, we got some recommendations for Primex. We got some resources from Primex. We charged a couple of teachers to draft a manual for how to go about making sure that things are stored properly, put away properly, thrown away, and disposed of properly, and to continue that work moving forward throughout the course of the year. And so that's still in draft form, we have to review it, but that has been done over the past couple of weeks. The other areas of new actions, and I don't know if that's on this slide or not. Yep, there it is, technology, security audit. So as we've been working on the, the technology planning, which is getting deeper and deeper as we speak, and very involved, which is great, there's a lot to, lot to do with technology. We realize that security of our students, of our data, of our teachers, our employees, our support staff, of us, anyone who's part of this network, is very important, and we need to continue to improve our security around that. And so we have been searching, actually, for a good month and a half or so for a company that could come on in and really test all of our systems to try to break through into our fire, through our firewalls and everything else, just to see if they can, if someone can basically hack into our data. And so you can hire people to do this and then be able to provide you with suggestions as to how to move forward, policy changes, all of that sort of thing. And so we have a recommendation from Primex, because we've been having a difficult time finding an organization, and they recommend the Atom Group, that is out of Portsmouth. I believe that they've been doing this with a lot of schools. And so we are continuing to move forward with that. We believe that that, getting a good security audit is going to be important for us in keeping everyone safe. So part of what the policy asks us to do is just provide some, some information. You've seen, most of you have seen this information before. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, because it's not very new. Basically, just some information on our buildings, the years that they were built, square footage, what the insurance value is, basically what they're insured for. You can see those numbers right there. I will say that Susan sent me a document today, just kind of mildly correcting the information here. In that 1936 Jaffrey Grade School was, says, was built. That is true to an extent, but not entirely true. And so there's information that the first Jaffrey Grade School building was in 1893, and there were other parts of, you know, updating that. And so there's, there's more to the story of that number, but it is an interesting historical read, and I can share that with you later on. It doesn't change the fact of what we're insuring the building at, but I appreciate the fact that she provided insight to the history of this community. And it's actually kind of, there's some neat stories to this. The schools on School Street is what her document is entitled. The losses and paid, you can see that here's workers' compensation over the years. There's information, you know, certainly that can't be shared, that gets very specific because it starts to get identifiable, but you can take a look at that. Same thing with property. You see that we didn't have any real loss in the last couple of years from a property standpoint. Have had some payouts, you know, within the year 2017, 18 seemed to be a year that we, in both categories, had some money that we had to spend. And then we go to unemployment. I wouldn't say that there's a lot of paid unemployment through the years. Definitely, people will apply for unemployment. So we do, these numbers do also talk about the number of individuals who are applying for unemployment if they and certainly through this last year with COVID, that's why those numbers are a little bit higher than in years past. Slide on property valuations. Maintenance records, this. This is the data that was in SchoolDude, the system that tracks all of the work orders. The information needs to be looked at, I think, at a much deeper level for it to be of value. I think that what I can say about this is that it's more accurate than it has been than the first two to three years that I was here. So over the last couple of years, one thing that David Brierley, I think, did very well was that he really tried to make, make it a priority for people to put work orders in. Sometimes the work orders were of a cleaning nature and shouldn't have been a work order. It should have been just common practice. Nonetheless, those were recorded and put into here as well. Our maintenance staff does stay very busy. Currently, we have one maintenance worker out of the two. And we have recently, I believe in the last school board meeting, you approved the hiring of a second one, who should come on board in the next couple of weeks. You can see the maintenance budget changes through the years. And in spending, this is just a broad overview. The difference really being from last year to this coming budgeted year was that we put money back into the paint and carpet cycle there in the tune of about $60,000, $15,000 for each of the, the buildings. Increased it by a fair amount. And then inspection reports. One thing that we've done through this audit, and as John has come in to take the role over, is see the need for us to have a better system of documentation and making sure that we can find things, you know, without having to search and search. Now, we have all the information, but the filing system or the, or the database system that we have needs to be improved upon. And so John's working on that even as we speak, just little by little through the days, making some changes. We do know that we didn't have any issues this year with penalties. In the years past, we have had some minor penalty or fines that have been provided to us because of inspections not being done in a timely fashion, elevator inspections, things like that. We did a much better job this year with that. Carrie Broderick really did a great job really overseeing the inspections of the lead testing. And that was a big undertaking this year, and we did well with that. And got a lot of equipment, a lot of items changed out as well. And then emergency plans. Every year, we update the emergency plans. I spoke with Lou Chatel, who just came on as our safety coordinator. And we talked, as one of the goals is really just to make sure that he's reviewing all the major emergency plans from each school, making sure that there are consistencies across the board, that best practices are put into place. We've definitely improved them over the years. The elementary schools have really done a good job over the years anyhow. The middle school, high school, I think probably needed the, the most improvement. And Michelle, being in the role that she's in, had really took it on last year and made some major improvements. So I am glad, I'm excited to see this next tier of review and, and change, I think, to all of the documents, to streamline those processes, improve our communication with our local police and fire as well at the exact same time. Another item that was added this year, that's still in kind of draft form, but it's a very solid draft form, and actually, we've been able to help other districts out by providing them some support in this way. We created, you know, Jen and David Dustin actually took up, took this on and created a crisis response manual. And this covers a lot of different areas, but if something tragic happens within our schools and our, or our school district, we have a roadmap of how we can handle things in an efficient and respectful manner. And so, again, that, even two, three weeks after we had, they had developed that, we had calls from another school asking for that type of support, and we were able to provide that, and that was really neat. And along with that, not necessarily tied directly to that guidebook, but closely related in, in the conversation was, we updated our suicide risk protocols for staff. So there's some new paperwork on that process, is that for reporting. And though not mentioned here, we will be, this year, it is law that we provide professional development for every single individual who works with kids. That's our staff, that's our individuals who are volunteers, individuals who are staff in the sense of substitute teachers. So we have some organization to do. We've identified some areas, some, some professional development for it, but getting the, the practice systematized is going to be the key. So those are the major things that have gone on in the area of safety as of late. And we'll take any questions or comments.
Nice report, Ruben.
Well, thank you.
I do have one question.
Sure.
About employees being injured?
Yes.
Do you, excuse me, or Kathy or someone on your staff, look at, you know, the cohort of employees or the, whatever it is that led to an injury, and really look at root cause and try to remove that kind of exposure?
As of late, yes. In the last year or so, last two years, Kathy and I have had multiple conversations when something does take place. We look at, I mean, there is a cohort of individuals who tend to have more injuries than others, and so it's why we need to continue to change up our systems. People who do a lot of repetitive motion, people who are walking on floors that could be a little slippery, things of that nature. We are continuing to look at our practices to improve them, to reduce the risk of injury. Making certain that even now, masks are worn throughout the buildings, that the rubber boots are being used when stripping and waxing floors and so forth. So those things are, we're paying special attention to. And of course, repetitive motions that don't need to be done, if they can be done in a better way. And then for staff who perhaps are more of the instructional staff, you know, some of the areas that we have had some claims in the past has been some sidewalk areas that we've had to fix. And so even today, the facilities committee looked at the parking lots, looked at walkways and so forth. And that con, that conversation needs to continue because we need to improve those areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ruben?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ruben. The LMS presentation.
So I'll just start off by introducing the individual. So I'll just start off by introducing the individuals who are going to be presenting tonight. I'm excited about this presentation. They put a lot of work into this. The entire group of individuals who worked on this study and the people who gave, provided feedback just did a really great job. It takes time, but because of this group, we know that this is a new model for us and it's still getting up and running, but this curriculum instruction assessment model. I was greatly encouraged by the progress we made in such a fast way and such a clear way and a respectful manner. And I think you'll see that through this present and hear it through this presentation. The individuals who are going to be presenting this evening are Dana Jackson and let's see, we have Dana and we have Heather Schulman and we have Wanda Meeger. And there are three individuals, there were others on the committee itself, but the three of them have decided that they would be, they would like to be the ones to present to you this evening. And I think that they will best be able to answer the questions that you have, as I'm sure you will have some. All right, I'll turn it over.
All right, thank you.
All right, hi, I'm Wanda Mahar and I'm going to start the presentation, but Dana and Heather are going to take over. So I'll start with, can you scroll down to the third slide? And you all have heard this before, this isn't new to you, but why do we need a learning management system? We need it to make it easier for us to personalize learning. We have to improve education or educator efficiency in order to personalize learning. And a learning management system can help us do that. We need to improve the visibility of student learning progress across grades and courses over time if we're going to personalize learning. And that's another thing that the learning management system can help us with. We want to have even more transparency with our learning community. And one way to help mitigate time and building constraints is to be able to have a blended learning environment, which the learning management system allows us to do. We had kind of an ad hoc blended learning environment over the past few months of school. And we did our best, but it could be better. And if we put in some best practices with the learning management system. Okay, if you can go to the next slide. So here's the process that we went through as a team, the whole CIA team, not just Heather and Dana and I. So we researched several learning management system options. Several people went to their list serves and organizations, professional organizations that they belong to and search for what other schools were using to try to find a bunch of learning management systems that were out there. And I think overall, I think we actually looked at more than 10 initially. And then each of us looked at those and took notes of what we thought were some good things about them, bad things about them, pros and cons. We documented all those findings. And that allowed us to establish some criteria for what we thought was most important, which was still a long list of criteria. And Dana is going to talk about that in a minute. To see what would best meet our needs. And then we narrowed it down to four possibilities. And for those four companies, we brought them, the reps in virtually to do presentations on their software, which allowed us to ask even more questions. And we updated our criteria based on, or updated the input from the four companies for all of our criteria. For so for each, each thing on our criteria list, we said, okay, well, this company can do this and this is better because and then we narrowed it down to two. The two that we narrowed it down to were Otis and Empower. You've probably heard about Empower, most of you. And we near, then we created a survey for teachers. We gave them access to the software. We gave them access to representative presentations of the software video form and asked them to play with it and take the survey to let us know what they thought was the best and what was most important to them to see in a learning management system. And when we examined all the feedback, and again Dana, I'll go into this in a little more detail. The clear favorite came back as a learning management system was Otis. So if you can scroll down to the next page, Nick, thanks. So Dana is going to take over here and talk about our criteria. She really helped organize all of that and give you a little more information on the survey results. Are you there Dana? Looks like she's muted. Did you give her an unmute Dana Jackson?
I gave her, she's back out of it.
She's still muted.
Right, let's try it again. Because she was unmuted when we started and then after we talked, she went to muted. Are you there Dana?
Can't hear.
Yeah, I have her as unmuted, but I'm not pulling in any audio.
Her microphone might not be working.
Last again. I just tried to pull her back in and I think she's completely disconnected.
Yeah.
Oh, she must have lost her connection. Well, I can continue through these next two slides so that we don't waste too much time. And if she can hear us at some point, she can maybe jump in if I miss something.
Back, but she's still quiet.
Yeah, right now she's connecting. It looks like she's connected and now let's see if we can pull her in. All right, so according to what I have on my end, she should be able to be heard.
It keeps.
Now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? All right, gotta love that, depending on technology. When we started this, I could, our entire group, an LMS was just new to all of us. And we really didn't know what to look for. So we kind of created our chart and we actually had about 40 different comparison points. And it was really cool because it was from all different level teachers, different, from special ed, from just everybody's input. And we kind of thought about what we wanted most. So we narrowed it down, we were thinking about classroom use for teachers in this world right now with COVID and having to do this remotely. We thought about the students being very user friendly. We want to do K to 12. We don't want to make it easy for one and another group of students that would not be reachable. We want to be able to use data and data from not just gradebook data, but our state tests, SATs, any of that. We want to be able to use that data. We looked at different tools, different types of assessment and what it allowed us to do. So some bullet points on there. My, the key points for myself as a teacher, starting with assessment. They had, Otis has this huge bank of assessment that helps you create formative, summative. However you like it, has different types of questions. It's really teacher friendly. Right now, it's a lot of, teachers spend a lot of time kind of putting all this material together when it's right there. It allows for collaboration. I could be team teaching with Heather or, you know, or Wanda. I, we could work together on, on something. It allows for grouping and regrouping. So if we have a set of students that need help on something, we can individualize and kind of see what individual students need rather than the class as a whole. We just wanted everything in one spot. And honestly, I didn't think that was going to be possible. I really, I didn't. And then we happened upon Otis and every, into the way. I was the person who kind of reached out to each one of these, these platforms and found a rep, had them talk, asked the first questions. Otis floored me, they were the most supportive. Anything I asked, whether I was playing with it in the classroom and I had a quick question on the side, immediate. Laura was wonderful with, I mean, we would give her lists of questions. Can you do this? Can you do this? Can you do this? And the best part, I think, is they're willing to work with us. It's not, here's our product, you work around us. It's what can we do to make your system the best for your students? So that was, like I said, we looked at every different angle. I know in the past, we've had a couple that we have kind of leaned towards maybe because that's kind of what we knew. But this platform by far surpasses anything I saw out there and I dug a lot. I tried to find as many different learning management systems as we could even look at. So, so that's kind of our criteria that we were using. And yeah, if you could pop down one. So like Wanda said, we did, we had two platforms. We gave any teacher, we offered any teacher who wants to play with it, give us some feedback. What did you like? What did you don't, you know, what didn't you like? And we had a pretty good response, but as you can see from our wonderful pie graph, that it's overwhelmingly supporting Otis. And the teachers who responded to our survey had a lot of the same points. They, certain things that we liked that they were looking for. They brought up a couple of questions that we hadn't thought of. But it was really a team-based effort here with lots of input from all different, all different stakeholders. I think that's all mine.
Okay. So we heard what the teachers told us. We asked for their voice, we wanted to know what they want. We heard it loud and clear and the point direction directed to Otis. That's when my doubting Thomas mind went to work and said, all right, then let me find out what's wrong with this program. Because I don't want to be surprised later on. And Otis is only an eight-year, it's only been around for eight years. It has, it was begun in a middle school classroom with this, a group of three middle school teachers complaining about what we complain about every day. I have too many platforms, I have to juggle in order to meet all the needs of my learners and my families. And these three individuals, in their brilliance, created Otis. Now, Otis doesn't stand for, the name isn't for a particular person, place or thing. It's an acronym and it stands for, I forgot what it stands for. Something organizing technology for us, excuse me, I'm sorry. Organizing technology for us, that says it all. The beta users of this platform were these middle school teachers, students, public school kids in the area of Chicago. Currently, Otis employs 65 people. Primarily, they were teachers. Some of them even taught using Otis during the spring, during the crisis. I, the current COO was a teacher, principal. The, the chief, the chief product officer is one of the three original creators. So it's not as if these people sold out, took their money and ran. No, these people are still in it. They seem to really believe in it. When I asked which, how many school districts use Otis, they provided this amazing picture of the United States. And it's from sea to shining sea, which is really interesting. Okay, the next one please. Now, Otis, what it does is it uses, it takes three of our tasks that we need. Data management, learning management and assessment management. It has all three. So if I want to, as one of the ladies said, look at my NWA scores for a group of kids. I don't have to go to outside of my Google Doc platform or what have you and go somewhere else and look for it. It is all there. It's easily accessible. Next please. To talk about the learning management tools, and we're not talking about classroom management. We're talking about tools teachers can use throughout the day to create personalized learning to meet the needs of all of their kids. Otis includes many, many professional development tools to make a teacher's job easier. It does not substitute for the teacher. It is a receptor, it has a lot of tools that we can use, that we can personalize depending on our students' needs. One thing that Otis does that we did not find in all the learning management systems is we can use our own teacher voice to record directions for students, for those that are struggling with independently reading. We can read to them with our voice. It does not use a computerized voice. We thought that was very important. Here are a couple of screenshots of what the learners may see. Now, what was real important for us is we wanted it to be user friendly from our littlest littles to our seniors. And what you see in front of you, the intro to the Civil War, is a classroom page that is of course for secondary learners. But our elementary teachers on our committee assured us that what they saw is appropriate for our primary students. Again, the assessment management. They have a bank of high-quality question stems that will encourage the teachers to ask high-level questioning on assessment. Looking at the assessments, teachers can design formative and also summative. And the beauty is learners can respond in a variety of ways. Nine different ways they can demonstrate their learning. No one size fits all here.
Can I interrupt there Heather for just a second?
Please.
Because one of the things for the elementary that was so important in their assessments is one of the things that you can do in creating assessments for elementary is create things that drag and drop. And that's what you really, really need for our littles is to be able to have them drag and drop. You could read them the questions, you can read them the instructions and then have them drag and drop the answers. And it's that, like they can drag a graph to a higher level. They can drag three oranges into a, I don't know, let's say a circle to show their learning on how to do some addition. So one of the really, really nice advantages for elementary was there was a lot of drag and drop and they can hear the teacher voice. I believe Heather, you didn't say it, but I thought that it also had video.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And if you stay on that slide, if you look at the example of where it says the assessment there and it's a basic question, Linda and Keith solved the problem, an addition problem differently. This is the difference. We are not just asking for the children to solve, to go through the process. We are requiring that they think and that's the goal that we should be really striving for. And the question is, explain why both of these problems worked and what the strategies were. So Otis has built-in ways that teachers can automatically elevate their assessment.
And, and provide feedback, verbal and video feedback as well, not just read the questions to them or show a video to, to tell them what the questions are. You can also provide verbal and video feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead. All right, this is the fun part. We spend so much money and so much time doing NWA, NHSAS, the SATs, you name it, A, B, C, D, everything. And we never really get to use the data to drive student learning. It's all going to be there in Otis. We will have the opportunity to send them our data, they will upload it and we will be able to use it in a real customized way so that we know which students need gaps filled, which students need remediation and which students need enrichment. Thank you. And again, some more screenshots. Got to love that color and those visuals, but it makes it easier for everyone to read. You can track an individual longitudinally. You can create a cohort and watch, track that progress over time. Look at a whole class's assessment and determine where the gaps were. Thank you. So we were so excited about this and we're not even the salespeople. We are just so excited we found something that we like and we think we can use, that we started to think, okay. We are just so excited we found something that we like and we think we can use, that we started to think, okay, if the board liked this and wanted to consider moving forward, how would we implement this? So that's where we are now, is we're coming to you and saying, we think we found a wonderful tool. And now we need to dig in our heels and figure out how we're going to make this work. Okay, thank you.
So I'm planning for implementation. That's going to be the biggest step in putting together an implementation team to meet with Otis and really plan well for a good implementation. Before we start uploading data, before we start training, before we just start deciding how to move forward, we have to have a good plan. We need a schedule. We need to know who's doing what. We need to know how it's going to move forward. And eventually, we can plan for rollout. So as we start to plan for rollout, after we identify the implementation team and create the implementation plan, what we're thinking right now as a team is that the first year, 2020 and 2021, will be educator choice on level of usage. So I'm sure that we will have some educators who jump right in and want to use the whole system immediately. And what the goal is, is to have those educators be talking about how awesome this is and how it's really helping them so that other teachers start to join in. But at the same time as we're doing that, we also want to be providing training to everyone in consumable amounts on our time. So that they don't have to, like, use their planning time to, like, go play with this system or I'm going to try one unit. We're going to give them training time in consumable amounts so they can see what it does and they can ask questions about, oh, my, this other teacher told me that does this. How do I do that? That's the thing I want to start with. And throughout the year, we'll have ongoing communication with Otis about what's working, what's not working. We're going to try to identify some best practices as we go, since we have a lot of teachers using it. And end the year with a review of how it went. What are those best practices? Now, how do we roll out? Are we still going to give choice? Are we going to make everybody implement? What does the training look like for the following year?
Really quickly, because I know this is my slide, but a couple of key things that are coming to me as we go through this that I want to make sure we know is, this system, we were kind of forced into this whole remote learning. And I feel like we did an awesome job. We pulled together as teams. We, you know, helped each other out. People who don't use technology, using technology and willing to take a risk. This is the best platform moving forward. Because first of all, it will, it's very much like what we've been using. It's, it's not Google Classroom. It's, it can be connected, but a lot of the same setup and the steps in planning are very similar. So even our teachers who took the survey, they got right in. They played with the system. They had a question. They chatted with Otis online. They didn't come and ask us. So right there, it was immediate usage. In our list of people, there were people that were tech savvy and there were people that I know are really still new to this. So it was really cool to see that. The second thing is portfolios. For years and years, I have been on numerous committees and tried to create something that's going to contain these, all these great things these kids do. This allows with one click, a student or a teacher to add something to that student's portfolio that takes them the entire K-12. So if I have something that I did, a project that I want to make sure is in there, I click on a star and that adds it for me. So I have this wonderful, wonderful portfolio that I don't have to go into a different system or a Google Slides or copy and paste pictures or scan this. It's right there. And I, going through all those steps with the portfolio piece and knowing how important that is with these kiddos going out into the real world, it's by far, there was not another learning management system that I looked at or we looked at that had anything like that for a portfolio. So cost, which is the all-important. This is kind of where we're at with the number of students. Laura kind of worked up some numbers for us. I want to reiterate that this includes everything, everything. So when my six weeks of training are up, I don't, it doesn't shut off. They're there for us at all times. Other learning management systems that we have been looking at, third-party data is all additionally cost. And not just one cost. Next year, when they take that assessment again, we have to pay for that to be uploaded again. So all those SAT, that NWA, anything we want to put in there, it's an extra cost. Certain platforms give us a certain amount of hours, 16 hours. When that's done, we can pay $250 an hour for training, and that's not individual training. That's a group of 50 or less. So if I had a question, I would have to wait until I had my training session to get that resolved. Where in Otis, I can ask a chat, I can email Laura, and I'll tell you within, within 30 minutes, an hour, depending on how detailed the question was, I get an answer and I can move on. I don't have to wait. Waiting is very frustrating for teachers who are trying to move forward. So cost-effectively, this is the system for us. I, I did get a proposal. I got a quote from one of our other LMSs that we were looking at. And the basic is very comparable, but it doesn't include anything. Doesn't include training. It doesn't include, you know, updating of any of those other test scores. It was a little discouraging to think that we want to use this and everything's extra. And I really felt like, Otis, what do you want? What do you need? I'm going to get it for you. And it was, it was, it was really a nice feeling to get your answers and feel like somebody's actually supporting you through this journey of technology. So that's kind of the basic piece. I know that, Ruben, you can probably speak more to costs, but.
Well, the only thing I would add is that this is what we anticipated. Because there's always startup fees. There's, you know, one-time implementation fees and so forth. And then there are annual costs. The goal here is to take these out of, this first round anyway, out of grant funds. We have been provided some grant funds specifically, actually, for the purpose of, well, in part, for technology integration and so forth. So we'd be, we wanted, whatever solution we were going to use, we're going to go that avenue anyway. And I think that, again, yeah, it's comparable. There is a, there is a cheaper way to go. The state, just to tell you how important it is for us as we move forward and how key it is to the Department of Education and is to have a learning management system, is the state is now offering people a free learning management system. They are trying right now to negotiate that and get it for any school that wants it. I talked specifically to the commissioner about this and he gave me what his system was that he was going to likely implement. And, you know, I congratulate him for getting this very base model for people. I think that that's probably where people are at and still jump, you know, better than where, better than nothing. And he would buy tools and things like that for them as well, then certainly we can jump in on that. But the system that he was going to get and push, first of all, the commissioner saying, hey, we need to have this sort of stuff. Now, we knew that ahead of time. We've, we've been looking at this for several years now. And we wanted to make sure that a learning management system wasn't something that was just forced upon us and something that would just help us a little bit with our organization, which is really more what I believe the state is moving toward. And it was a system, by the way, the state's moving forward with a system that we very quickly ruled out because of its ineffectiveness. For, well, ineffectiveness, by the way, for our current educators who are in the Leadership Academy. So never mind for our high school students, for our middle school students, and certainly not a platform for our elementary students. There's no question about that. But the importance of having one, we wanted to make certain that we're looking at developing, getting a learning management system that is helping us move our strategic design and our planning forward to that personalized learning, to develop those personalized learning plans for all students. And I think that one feature that this one had that clearly the other ones did not have was the robust use of data. And this, and I say robust because it's not just about the amount of data and the graphics and so forth that are at your fingertips. It's the ease at which you can then use it to implement an educational change. And so I think someone used the word grouping and regrouping. We've heard that over the past several years of something that's very important as students either are having difficulty in an area or they've already mastered the area. All right, let's find out who those students are. Find out fast. Triangulate it with some other data. Oh, this makes sense. Let's do something different. Let's not wait a day or two or three or a month, you know, or anything of that nature. Let's utilize that information for the betterment of these students right away.
I think that was the last. The couple there. I think those are just backup. So when we get some questions.
So are there questions? Yes. First of all, thanks for that. That was really informative.
I agree. How many teachers participated in the survey?
26. Am I right?
That was the number I was going to use too, so I'm pretty sure you're right. And specifically. About two weeks' notice. So we sent, we sent out a request for them to join the survey, I think, on a Friday. And by the next Friday, we wanted to know whether they were going to do it. And by the next Friday, we wanted their input. So they had literally two weeks to work on it because we were trying to really rush this. And we were really pleased that we got as many as we did and the feedback was very detailed. Everyone, and most, most of the questions on the survey were short-answer. And they were very eager to provide us with information.
Lots of information, yeah.
I think the numbers, yeah, you had 26, but you had a good spread across the district, different types of individuals, their certification areas and so forth, you know, from the K-12 spectrum. And so that was important to note. And yeah, the fact of the matter is it's summertime. You can't force people to take these sorts of things in, which, and by the way, it took work to do prior to answering those questions. So there was professional development involved. We did provide people professional development credits who wanted to do this. Others who were already on the salary scale all the way over, we gave them, we offered anyway, a stipend, a modest $50 stipend for the three to four hours of work that it would take in order to give us good feedback. And so the people, we had four people who did that. So that there was something for everybody within the teaching system.
And to speak to the range of responses, I actually resorted the responses by, by role. And we had at least two people from every, every role category that we were capturing. So K-2, special ed, even we had two administrators, I think, take the survey. And 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. So we had, we had at least two people from every category. And I was looking, when I did it, I was looking to see if the responses were slightly different. And I was reading through the comments and they weren't. Other than a few of the lower elementary saying, this looks user-friendly for our elementary kids.
Thank you. All of the data will be warehoused with Otis, right?
I'm actually not sure on that. I'm not sure if they're going to host the system or if we're going to host the system. So that definitely is a good question to ask and we should probably get an answer before we move forward. One of the things that we really liked about this system was performance. So even though what we, what we were playing with was hosted by Otis, the performance was still really, really good. But if it's going to be hosted by Otis, we're going to have to ask some security questions.
Yeah, I would, I would be curious about security, but also migration if we were to ever change. And then it's impressive that they're such a new company. I guess that the process started in 2012, but it was founded in 2014. I would typically, I guess, want to get it done in Bradstreet. And the financial strength of the company. If we're going to embark on this relationship. I don't know if we'll get much because they're privately held, but maybe there's some other reporting outfits. It sounds really exciting. Would this, would this replace any platforms we're currently using, once everyone's using it?
It integrates really well with Google. So we would still be using Google, but it would mostly replace the Google Classroom part, which is sort of the learning management system part of Google. It's very limited compared to what Otis does. So it would replace that. Where part of the implementation plan, I think, would be to figure out where it fits with our SIS. So our web-to-school software. Because it does collect a lot of the same data that web-to-school collects or can, including attendance. And so one of the thoughts that I had was even for those teachers who aren't ready to full-on use it for learning management, maybe they have to use it at least for attendance. But it will capture 504s, it will capture IEPs, it will capture almost all the information that we keep in our SIS. So that certainly has to be looked at, but it has to be looked at carefully and in detail to make sure we don't lose anything.
Right.
And it can do reporting out, like our SIS does too.
And, and we will be, and one of the things with implementation is that it will be customizing, customizing the reporting out.
One thing that would make it even more attractive would be if it negated the need for a platform that we're currently using.
I, I think the safe answer for the first year is no.
Right, I understand that.
It could. It could in the future if that's what we, you know, only so much change at a time, but it really seems like it could.
This is Patty Farmer. And I was wondering, what other stakeholders would access this? So obviously, parents access web-to-school. Some parents access Google Classroom or get emails from Google Classroom or look over their student's shoulder with Google Classroom. So is there any of this that might touch other stakeholders? Not for their opinion necessarily. I believe, I understand the main focus of this, but I'm just curious what other focuses might touch.
I don't know. Ruben, you might have a better answer to that. Definitely families, families, students, educators, administration to a certain extent. And not even just to a certain extent, because the visibility to data is huge. And the way they can look at it and organize it and help teachers work with it is, is huge.
One of the benefits for the families is that Otis not only provides a blog or chat available for teachers, but also for parents. Parents with questions about managing, maneuvering the system, finding things, finding their child's work or grades. In addition to, of course, checking with the classroom teachers, parents can contact Otis directly and Otis will communicate with them.
Right now, with Google Classroom, parents get very little feedback. They get an email that says, your son or daughter is missing X, Y, Z. But it doesn't give you an explanation of what it is, how they have to complete it.
but it doesn't give you an explanation of what it is, how they have to complete it. So this is a much more user-friendly parent portal for, you know, getting that information out there. So parents can know what their students are doing.
And is that parent access K through twelve? Or is it more per, okay.
Yes. And another feature, since we're finding that many of our older learners are veering away from the world of email, we can, through Otis, text, send text messages to our students, to our families. So that's one more, one more way we can facilitate communication with our stakeholders.
It's one way, though, so it protects our privacy.
Right.
And it's sign-on, it's not, you don't have a different sign-on for all these different things. So for Khan Academy or MobiMax or more, you know, you, they use the Gmail account and it's all there. So it's housed together.
So if I could ask a question. First of all, just like to say thank you, we've been aware of this learning management system as a part of the process for years now, and it's really exciting to be at this point. But my question is, is there anything that we should be thinking about or working to understand about this system as you move forward? And along with that, I'd just ask, do, do you, as members of this committee that have looked so closely at this, are, are there questions outstanding for you still at this point?
One of the things that I, we haven't, I don't think we really mentioned it yet is the ability to do different types of grading. So you can have your traditional grading, and we can use our competency-based, all our learning progressions that we've been working on, those are individual, those can be used as well. So we're trying to move over from the traditional to the four-point or the competency-based learning. This allows us to do it a little at a time. It's not all of a sudden, you're done with traditional, now you've got to do it this way. We've come so far with this, with the learning, how to, to grade, how to create assessments for competency-based learning, but we're not there yet, we're not a hundred percent drop traditional and go to competency-based. So that piece, I think, is, is going to help us be successful as we move towards that goal. As for questions, I know for myself, I don't have any additional questions because anytime I got a question, I just emailed Laura and I had an answer.
Well, there, there are some things that they learned, since some of their employees were actually doing remote teaching, while we were doing remote teaching, they learned a couple of things that they want to fix, that they're hoping to have implemented over the summer, and that was definitely, that answered a couple of my questions as I started playing with it. One of the things that they really need is threaded discussions. They have discussion boards and blogs that you can use. But what I mean by threaded discussion is if a parent were to have a question on an assignment, that, that discussion takes place on the assignment, and that all parents can then see the response to that discussion.
Great.
Might sound minor to you, but when you're remote teaching.
I bet.
All right, are there any other questions for these ladies?
Is, is the intent for the district to migrate to this in three years or five years? That we wouldn't be running two systems in parallel for a long time?
I might sound aggressive than this, but I would hope that, that 2021 is the year that we, we give, provide choice and that after that, we move forward. But I don't think we can know the answer to that until we do review at the end of next year.
The platform is so user-friendly that after experiencing the COVID crisis and we're learning on the fly, we're already in a better learning place, we already know more than we ever did. So I think our learning curve is not going to be quite as steep.
Well, the tool for regroup, again, I'll go back to, especially for the elementary school, it's, it's true for the middle high school as well. But a lot of conversation about grouping and regrouping has taken place over the last two to three years at the elementary level. And the fact that it has such clear capacity within minutes to help you sort students in data-driven, I, I don't like the phrase data-driven, I like data-informed, but this is literally data-driven ways, just allows just an incredible amount of efficiency. So that, you know, one of the fears that I had was, well, all right, people want to get back to normal, what we call normal. And certainly, we want face-to-face connection and so forth. Do we, will we really need to have this learning management system? Does everyone really need to utilize that thing? There's a reason to utilize it all the time to even run a face-to-face classroom. So if, it, that was what stood out to me more than the other places. And I looked at Empower pretty, that was the other choice that we had. And we've talked about, a lot about that, there's certain things that Empower does do very well. And but, but to, to implement a system like that, because there's some things that it doesn't do well at all. To implement a system like that, we need to be three to four years further along. And I think what Dana said was really fantastic, thank you Dana, for saying, listen, we need a scaffold for not just our learners in the classroom, but our learners as to the teachers, the professionals. And we need to give that gradual release of responsibility, that's education ease for support, support. We do, you know, together, and then you do a little bit more as you go along to make sure that the transition and the learning is appropriate for all. And really, it ends up being faster as a result.
Does, does it integrate with Zern?
Good question, right? So the, anything that we want to connect, if, if, I mean, if anything that we want that's web-based, which Zern will be, we're able to connect to it.
Just a quick thing, Laura, the Otis representative is actually on this Zoom meeting right now. And she just, a chat message that said, Wanda, Heather and Dana have done a fantastic job in answering questions. If you'd like me to speak to hosting or security, I'm available and willing. So I don't know if that's something that we want to open up to or not.
I, I, you know, why not, just for a few minutes anyway, because the question was asked. And, and Laura's here, if that's okay.
So hi all, thank you for allowing me to speak. It's been such a pleasure to get to know some of your teaching staff, and especially Heather, Dana, Wanda and Ruben. The questions that I saw that you brought up are the three that I wanted to address, are first with hosting. So Otis is hosted itself. Districts have asked in the past if they can host the solution, but usually it ends up being, well, every time it's ended up being that Otis ends up hosting the system to maintain the high-level securities, the speed, making sure we can update things for that reason, so we do host it. Furthermore, I know the question was asked about financials, and that's a really important one, right? We're a privately-held company, we're newer, what does that mean? So we are funded by one person, his name is Andy Bloom. He is a very wealthy person who started Otis as a philanthropic mission to give back to his community. And that's how he partnered with the two educators at the middle school that Wanda was able, no, it was Heather. Heather told us about with the Otis story. So that is our financial backing. And then the final question was hosting, financials, and then security of the system. So since we maintain student data, HIPAA, FERPA, all of the things that are most important, we are always maintaining, and the high-level security is why we have a, a security officer that's always mandating the system to make sure it's held to those. I can send a one cheater on additional information about some of the security things for you all to review. But if you have absolutely any questions, I can answer, answer them. As for Zern, as long as it is a web-based solution, we can link out to it. We are building out our LTI capabilities, which means we'd be able to inherently move data from one piece to another. I know the question was, if you all decide in the future to move away from Otis, what would happen with the data? The data is yours always, so you would have full access to all of your data. Is there any other questions I can ask or anything I can further clarify?
Thank you for those.
Absolutely.
So one of the things that, I mean, I hear you say that it's, and this is to everyone, that it's really user-friendly and that, you know, being kind of thrown into with COVID, the, the steep learning curve of, of doing remote learning or you're using a, a platform more frequently. One of the things that I'd be curious of, because I see, you know, there's the formative as well as summative assessment that can be done through this, that the growth that our students, of teachers who use it, I would like to see, you know, there's kind of like a predicted or an anticipated growth of a student in a year. But I'd really love to know then, what are the results? Because I know personally, if you do formative assessment well and have this ongoing conversation, the growth is usually greater than anticipated. So I, I don't know if there's any anecdotal, anything at this point. That's my curiosity.
Would you like me to take that question? I just didn't want to speak out of turn.
Well, I was going to ask for clarification first, Laura, thank you. So Marcy, are you saying, is there documented evidence or from other schools, for instance, that the
Anywhere.
increase of formative assessment, oh, right, with this tool?
With this tool, right, because I know, I know inside the black box, not a problem. I want to know this tool, how it helps us with that.
Okay, Laura, do you, do you want to handle that one?
She's muted.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I muted myself, it's like a habit, I didn't know I couldn't unmute myself, so that was my own fault, I did that. So for the question of, do we have any anecdotal data that using Otis increases, you know, student outcome, student achievement? We've never done a study, so I can confirm to you, we have this percentage of growth. What I can share with you is feedback from other districts that use us, they can share from their experience what they've seen. Especially when it comes to, you know, user-friendly, I think that's very much so in the eye of the beholder. I always like to give that kind of caveat when I'm demoing the product. I work for the company, so I can move through the solution very seamlessly. So I loved that a part of the evaluation process was having the teachers go in and use it firsthand without any training. I mean, all they had were our YouTube videos and then access to our support team and documentation, and they're able to use it. Now, for how much will this solution adjust student outcomes? I think that's a two-folded question. The first fold is, let's talk to current customers and see some of their feedback, and I'll share that with you, so you can hear from them. And then the second fold is, it's dependent on how well it's adopted, and then best practices that are used. For the use case that we spoke about very in-depthly was, we're not at a competency, standards-based grading yet, but that's where we're going to want to move towards. And since we have this capability of living in both the points world and then the standards, habits of work, competency world, you can create assessments, both formative and summative, and link each item to whatever standard, standard that you make up, or the state standard to common core. And then you can track their progress on that. So you can start to just at least at the very minimum, analyze every attempt on it to see where they're going. And then you'll start to understand if there's a difference in what you've seen previously. I know that was kind of a convoluted way to answer, but did that answer your question?
That, that's definitely headed there, and it also, I think, helps with one of the things that we had been talking about, having our, our grades, our, you know, what we're reporting kind of match also as a predictor for what will happen on standardized tests at the state level or, you know, the private SATs or whatever.
And what you'll be able to do with Otis is you can look at the historical reports. So you can look at that, so we'll take in as much data as you provide to us. If you want to give us three years, five years, whatever you can give us in raw form, we'll upload. And then you can look at that versus next year and start to have those baselines of seeing where those differences are. Because I think a lot of the times, formerly I was a fourth-grade teacher in certified elementary and special ed, and, you know, it was only as good as the data that I was provided, right? Like, I couldn't say, look at how much they've grown if I didn't have the background data to show that. So those are some of the things we can do. And, and I think Wanda, Heather, Ruben and Dana did such a fantastic job of really illustrating that, you know, we all come from the background of teachers, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's not our theory that we're going to shove down your throats. I don't ever want us to be in that place. It's, what do you need to be successful and how can we support you in getting there? And making sure it's customizable and then consumable? Because the worst thing that can happen is we come in and we say, we're replacing everything, we're knocking everything else you love out, and then shoving Otis to them, it's not as well-adapted. So we want to be really thoughtful about what's going to make the most sense, what's going to serve both your strategic goals as a school and district, and then the inherent needs of your students, and then build it in a well-thought-out way. Because, I mean, does implementation ever end? You're always getting new teachers, you're going to get new data sets every year. It's, it's a process and we want to grow with you. And I know someone did speak to, what are the main cohorts that this affects? The way Otis thinks about it just is like a login at the very minimum. Administrators need to log in the system and see everything. Educators need to log in and see their classes or their subgroups. If it's like a special ed class, or if they're a speech-language pathologist. Students need to be able to log in, and then families and guardians need to be able to log in. So those are the four kind of groups that we think of login-wise. And then we want to make sure that we go beyond just the basics of the students who aren't meeting a standard who are on. Can we start to group students who have experienced trauma in your district? How are they performing versus the students who aren't? Or could we have a group of students that have limited internet access if we ever have to go back into a COVID-19 world? And hopefully, you can hear me knocking on wood that we, that doesn't happen. But we are prepared. And I know one of them we're speaking about, we had some teachers at Otis that taught with the program. I was one of them, so I can, if you have any questions about like what it really looks like to teach 167 students that you've never met, kindergarten through second, I can answer those questions too, because I, I did that. So you've been asking great questions, and I can't commend the process of evaluation that your team has gone through. It's definitely far superior to a lot of schools, and I manage the Northeast, so I get to talk to quite a few school districts. So you've all done a very fantastic job.
That's good to hear.
Other questions for anyone here?
A couple of Laura's points triggered some questions. So in terms of data that gets uploaded, how much work is typically involved in doing that?
So zero work if you want it to be zero work. We say, give us a raw file and tell us what you want to see, and our team does it. Some schools opt to have their team do it, and then we'll just teach you how to do it, and then it would be more burden on the district. But we usually say, first year, send us the files, we'll do all the back uploading of years previously, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. And there would have to be a gatekeeper for access, right?
Yeah.
I guess the district has to have one now anyway.
Right. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who worked on this.
Yeah. Great.
Perfect.
Very exciting.
I think Patty had a question.
No, that was earlier, I'm good.
Okay. All right. So.
All right, well, thank you. Again, thank you to everyone who worked on it, I think that all the names are on that front slide, is, is that correct? At least one version of it did have that. And Heather, Wanda and Dana for presenting tonight. And all those people who participated along the way, I think it was a really great effort. I think I also want to. I think I also want to thank, even though they weren't part of the initial process, the elementary principals and vice principal, and the teachers who worked with them on the math work that we did earlier. The reason for taking the more, though, though fairly quickly, because we moved, these people moved extremely quickly, our teachers here, and were just, had some great momentum. But they chose the process to be as thorough as they possibly could and used the process that we talked about with the math curriculum work that we've been doing with, you know, recommending ZERN as a, as a meth, or as a tool to use. They wanted to be as thorough or as much as we possibly could be, as they were, because they felt that that process really was very inclusive to moving forward.
All right. So, yeah, thank you to everyone. And I know in your, your slides here, you talked about a possible implementation plan. So I think we should go back and address that maybe at our next meeting. So we'll put that on our future.
So the question I would have for the board is timeframe on moving forward with this platform. Is this something, for instance, that we talk more about at the Education Committee in the next week? Is this something that we come back and finalize at another board meeting? Is this something that we approve now and just say, you know, when you get your grants written and so forth, you move forward? And then we continue to work on this as we go forward and keep people updated?
Is there, what's the timeline for your grant funding?
I have, that, that's from now, as soon as I start it, which could be tomorrow, till, you know, I've got, I've got time. That's not an issue.
When?
The, the, more, more of the issue is how long it takes. You know, what is our goal with utilizing the platform or the solution, sorry, for those people coming into school in the fall? Is it possible to get it set up so that those who wanted to could use it right away? You know, I think that we have, you know, to think about that, because it's going to take time to get everything loaded, and we're going to have to move pretty, with some pretty, um, we'd have to, we'd have to go quickly.
Quick.
Certainly, if we wait longer, that prolongs that process and can make it for a little bit more of an awkward implementation. So, you know, I think, Laura, you were saying that maybe 30 days was kind of the average for implementation? I mean, not implementation, but setting up?
Setting up. She's muted again.
She's muted again. Sorry, I should just leave myself unmuted. Thank you, Nicholas, for always unmuting me. So, the team's goal to implement was always 30 days. That's their goal. And we can do it in 30 days. The thing that I would challenge you all to kind of think about is, how much time do you want to go through that process? 30 days is a fast turnaround. We need to have your identified student information system, so your web-to-school person to do rostering. We've actually already been talking to web-to-school to make sure we had a well-thought-out plan to get started with that. So that's pretty much done. The next person has to be your data person. And then your final person is kind of the spearheaded of the Otis project. And then with those three people, we start with uploading all of your data, creating the training plan, and then refining the training plan, and then starting to upload, because we don't want to train your teachers until there's something meaningful in the system. So at the very least, they're students. And then make sure they have enough time prior to school starting, if it's remote or onsite, to get comfortable with the system before students come back. So that's, so 30 days, we can do it. I usually say, you know, three months is the most comfortable, but 30 days is
It might need to be three months.
Right. Absolutely. So it's really, think about it this way. We can run as fast or as slow as you want to run, but you guys set the pace. So how fast do you feel like running?
So, I think that it would be great if we had a little pause so that we can think about this and go, "Oh, wait, I didn't, I didn't think about this. I want to ask this question." Do we need two weeks of that? Probably not. Probably a week would be good enough. Where we, you know, here's our questions, like Dana, you did, every time you said, "Here's a question," you know. We can collect those questions, send them off, get them answered, and you know, we would know then better. That's my thinking, but anyone else?
I, I've been waiting for an LMS for a long time. I don't think that I have any questions that I could ask that haven't been, already been asked by Dana, Heather, Megan, and Ruben. I've been listening to the entire conversation here. When I look at a risk perspective, for a LMS, and we're talking buck a student, that's really what we're talking about. $1 for a whole year's worth of data on a student. I don't even know why I'm sitting here arguing about it.
Not arguing?
I don't even know why I'm sitting here discussing it. To me, it's a no-brainer.
That sounds like a motion. Oh, my God.
Yes.
To me, it's, I'm just saying.
I second.
I don't see how we've run this district without a brain management system for, you know, as long as I've been on the board. So that's my consensus.
So, so now that we've kind of jokingly said, do we want to have a formal motion and second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would be fine with that. I'd be fine with that, too.
All right, then.
I will Charlie do the honors, since you've been waiting so long.
What are the honors?
Make the motion.
My motion, my motion would be to go ahead and authorize Ruben to do whatever he needs to do to start the implementation and report back, um, report back to us with an implementation plan.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second to give Ruben the authority to get this thing going and report back to us. So I'll do roll call vote. Charlie?
Hi.
Laurel?
Hi.
Patty?
Emphatic "I."
Heidi?
Hi.
Alicia?
Yes.
John?
Hi.
And I say "I" too. So it passes 7-0-0. Wow.
Good job.
Nice work. We got it all in one night.
Congratulations.
Just say thank you to the committee again, who worked so hard to figure this out. It's exciting. And thank you, Laura, for being with us to be able to quickly answer those important questions.
Absolutely. On behalf of Otis, we are so excited to welcome you all to the Otis family. And if you do have any questions, as you take some time to kind of digest everything we went through, we're always here to support you and answer any questions you may have. So, welcome to the family. We're so excited to get started.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. All righty. Um, so, next up, we have an action item. It is the elementary mathematics resources.
Thank you. Thank you for all the additional information you sent. It was very helpful. The only, I guess, question I have is, it, from both reports and the videos, it looks like headphones are a really big thing. And do we have enough for all the students that will need to use them?
Wanda could answer that question better than anybody. Wanda, you're unmuted. My guess is that we need to get more headphones. And, but
Always.
We seem to always need to get more headphones. I don't know why.
Why? They, they break. A lot. Um, no, I, I, we don't, we don't budget at a school-wide level for headphones. So it's up to individual teachers to supply headphones for their classrooms. That sometimes happens.
No. Oh, Susan's giving an emphatic "no." Maybe unmute Susan there, Nick. There we go.
Yeah, no, we do, um, we have made mass purchases for the school. Teachers don't have to buy microphones out of pocket, or headphones out of pocket, nor does that come out of their classroom supply budget.
But there are there ones that are responsible for ordering them, or is it a combination?
No. They give me request, this is JGS, that's all I can speak to for JGS. Maybe Ringe runs it differently. Wanda works in both places, so she may be saying that's the difference. So typically, once, twice a year, I'll take an order for, you know, who needs headphones, and then see what we can do financially to order as many as we can get. As we move to smarter balance testing, and now the New Hampshire SAS being done in classrooms, grades three through five, we did a lot of purchasing of headphones, so those grade levels are in better shape. Younger grades tend to have, you know, sets that correspond with the number of Chromebooks that they have. So they might have a set of six or something. So certainly, we'll need to get some. And as Wanda said, they're, they're always breaking too, so we need to keep replacing them frequently.
And sharing isn't, is going to be frowned upon, I suspect.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you don't need a pencil when you come to class anymore. You need your headset.
And I'd have to, I'd have to look at the regulations, but one of these grants that we've been talking about is for the purpose of remote, you know, enhancing remote instruction and so forth. And if headphones isn't, are necessary for that sort of thing, and that type of learning, then it might be able to be something I can purchase through that process as well. I'm not sure if supplies like that are considered fair game or not yet.
Thank you.
So, this is an action item, so.
I have a question. Ruben, you sent out supplementary information, which included John Hopkins' study of ZERN first year. And, and the study showed that new math and the state assessment exams, there was no statistically significant difference between treatment students and comparison students. And it also said, well, beings related to increased usage were all positive and statistically significant. They were small in magnitude. So basically, what the study says is that if we implement this, we can't, we can't expect the the elementary mathematics resources to change our results. That the results change has to be from something else, not necessarily from this particular program. Is that correct?
Oh, I, I think that's true about every program, that the results are going to come from the instruction, which, which is not just instruction, but also carefully looking at the student data, their understanding, and also making certain that they are challenged at the level that we say they need to be challenged. And so that really gets to the complex reasoning side of things. And so we really started to make some good headway in the middle school this past year before COVID hit, with the understanding of what it meant to, to have higher-order thinking. But in order to do that, and we need to do some more of that with the elementary schools and continue that dialogue and also demonstration to people as to how that can, how that can happen. But they do need to have the tools that are useful for that purpose. And so if we continue, no matter what program or materials we use, if we continue to utilize the, have the same expectations, then we'll get the same type of results. If we see that these materials, oh, oh, my goodness, these questions are so much more difficult, or they're harder, or they really ask more of the students, how are we going to teach that differently? How are we going to make sure that our students are exposed to that type of, those types of problems, I guess you could say, problem sets, more and more, and that is the norm? When we raise our expectations, that's when you'll see the growth. But if, if I were to compare anything that's Eureka, Engage New York, ZERN, all from the same area, there's been some really good work that's been done curriculum-wise to develop those. And they, as long as those problem sets are utilized appropriately, then that will be when the increase changes in our state assessments and so forth. The other piece of ZERN, though, that's better than, and I hadn't heard of ZERN before until this past year. But I do know Engage New York, and I know Eureka very well, highly difficult programs to implement into a system, largely because they are so different in content than all the rest of them. So ZERN, having that higher-level content as a norm, which is not a norm in a typical program, there's little bits in all the programs, but not as a constant stream of it. The fact, what sold me on it was the, which is very similar to this learning management system, was the ability to be flexible and that this program promoted good practices. Like, it actually, the teachers who utilized it and utilized it well this past year when they were working with it, were able to cite that they were able to, it really helped them focus on getting that small-group instruction that was geared toward what the students needed. And that's a lot of the conversation that we were having over the last two to three years with that type of regrouping to improve the, the outcomes for each child. And so it promotes good practices, whereas the other programs don't promote any practices necessarily. And so it's up to whomever to decide, where this one almost forces you, and correct me if I'm wrong, Susan or Kelly, but it almost forces you to have to utilize these better practices in order to instruct, which is what I like so much about it. It's Yeah.
Exactly. It, um, it will be a good move in the right direction as far as moving away from a whole-group instruction, or as much of it as there probably currently is in some places, to really honing in on personalizing for kids.
I, I might be wrong, but I think the John Hopkins study compared Engage New York to ZERN. And Engage New York is a curriculum that's more rigorous than what we're currently.
Engage New York is the basis of ZERN and Eureka, yes. It's the, it's the curriculum that was built in New York out of the, the funds from the ERA funds.
Well, I, I think, like, anything, Charlie, the key is going to be with the, the teachers and administrators that support them.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, that I didn't have the expectation of seeing the SAS scores jump up that first year. Because this is primarily an urban school with 58% minorities, and it was nothing like the audience that we have. But, no, I just wanted to make sure that, that I understood anyway, that this is not a fantasy. It's not, it's not the program that's going to result in magical increases in our math scores.
No silver bullets.
No.
But I do think it will, that this program is not the most difficult to implement. Others will take, you know, there are other places that are, for instance, using Eureka, I know, because I helped implement some of those in other places, and they're still trying to figure it out. It's just, it's math, especially at the elementary level, is, is difficult to teach, because they're all learning it for the first time. You're constantly building.
I'm, since I'm at a computer and looking at another computer, I was able to look up, you know, a research study from Harvard, 2019, spring. Textbook choice alone does not seem to improve student achievement. So I think there's research out there that supports just what Ruben is saying, that it's really your, your background knowledge on what are the best instructional practices, what is the level of thinking that we're working toward, all of that is really what makes the difference, and the fact that ZERN offers And the fact that Zern offers a high level of content will encourage those practices.
Are there any other questions before we take action? All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the elementary mathematics resources.
Second.
Thank you, Patty. And roll call vote, Charlie.
Yes.
Thank you, Laurel.
Yes.
Thank you, Patty.
Yes.
Thank you, Heidi.
Yes.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, and John?
Yes.
Thank you, and I say yes as well. So that passes 7-0-0. And we have new mathematics resources.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on here. Number eight, the bid award, the phone system.
Yes, is Mike, is Mike on tonight? No?
No.
Okay, he must, okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll just take it. Basically, Mike put out with myself, I, I supported Leslie and also Carrie helped write the RFP for this. The phone service, we only had one company come back with the specifications that we were looking for. We were not terribly shocked by that. This is a company that knows our district well and is very popular in the, in the region. So this, and it came in less than what we had anticipated. We budgeted $70,000 for this. I'm sure there's possible changes that will take place that were unexpected anytime you're dealing with wiring or anything of that nature. But Arcom Communications can, is set to put in a system here as described below in the bid specifications to, to bring us out of, I guess you could say that, some archaic times. We talked at the budget season that we would do this for the middle school, high school building, and that we would then start, once, we would start addressing the elementary schools after that. So in this next budget cycle or the next two budget cycles. But we could expect that the pricing for the buildings in the elementary, for instance, next year or the year after would be, you know, roughly half of this, since this is really two schools that we're talking about here with Arcom Communications for $65,453. Our previous technology director very much liked Arcom Communications as does our current manager. And again, one, one bid, but it came in at the right price anyhow and is giving us the specification that we're looking for. I would encourage us to go with it so that we can start to line up that work.
How much, how much time was there between issue of the RFP and due date?
Oh, I'd have to look back. I actually prolonged the time originally. So I'd have to look at the, my communications with them. It was a while ago that we did this. So the bid date was June 24th. I think we put it out in, in May. I think toward the end of May.
Okay. Do you know if this provides phones for both cafeterias? It's unclear here. I just, I asked that question because it came up in the MOAs and the safety, health and wellness.
Phones for cafeterias?
Yeah.
Interesting. Well, we can make sure that it does.
That would be great.
Yep.
I don't know if it's relevant, but I'm familiar with the company and the, the staff and leadership, and they're a good company.
Great. I move we waive the three bid requirement and authorize Ruben to enter into an agreement with Arcom Communications to provide phone system for the middle school, high school, including phones in the cafeterias.
Specifically.
Yeah.
All right. So thank you, Laurel, and thank you, John. So we have a motion to approve this bid for the middle school, high school, including cafeteria phones.
Do we want to include a not to exceed?
A what?
Not to exceed in the motion.
Oh.
Not to exceed $66,000.
Okay, so not to exceed $66,000. So I'll do the roll call vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Thank you. Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you, Patty.
Yes.
Thank you, Heidi. Oh, okay. We'll go, that's a thumbs up, Ms. Yes. She must be muted.
All right. Yes.
All right, so Heidi, are you still?
I'm, I'm a yes. I'm so sorry. My dog insists on being near me and she just heard something outside, so.
That's fine. John?
I.
And I say I. So that passes 7-0-0. Thank you.
And just quickly to answer the question that was asked, May 20th was when it was posted. So a little over a month.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So we're on to number nine, committee updates. So starting with the board committees, education. I don't think the education, is the education committee met since the last time we reported?
No, it's set to meet next week.
Next week, right?
Yeah.
Right. So I think, Charlie, do you have anything that, or Alicia, that you wanted to report?
Not for education committee, no.
Okay. So just that our meeting is next week. Okay. Facilities, Laurel?
I have a request to the education committee.
Oh, okay.
If you would work with administration to better leverage a system we use called Naviance, which I guess can provide some reporting on outcomes post-high school based on conversa, information I learned during a school funding forum. They can, they can leverage data from the National College Clearinghouse on persistence and duration to graduation for our students. That would, I think, be great.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, facilities.
Facilities.
We met today. We will meet again, I hope, in two weeks. There are some projects that are getting done and coming off our tracking sheet. I'm very pleased to report that. The SAU door to the middle school is one of those. Also, progress on the facilities garage that Ruben reported on earlier. The big piece of work we have coming up is a review of an architectural and engineering services, response to a proposal, RFP that we put out. And we hope, the facilities committee hopes to be coming back to you at the next board meeting with a recommendation.
And that group will.
But we're going to try.
That group will meet on Monday at 9:00 AM. That's when it will be scheduled for. We've, I put a request out for people to join. I haven't checked my email in a couple hours, but one person out of the four that I put out has responded as a yes. So we have some community members that will be coming to help with that process.
So we look forward to receiving those responses and preparing for that meeting.
Yeah.
The other big piece of work we're focusing on is parking lots. And today, we met at Jeffrey Grade School and reviewed and, I guess, solidified the plan that we hope we can get executed this summer before the start of school, at the end of August. A small revision to circulation and an improvement to the parking. A forestry RFP that we have a response to would help us with the Ringe Memorial School parking situation. And with that lead-in, I'd like to ask that the board waive purchasing requirements and accept the single response we received to our forestry RFP. It is not the level of expenditure that requires board approval of the expenditure. It's just a waiver for the three bids. The proposal we received is very reasonable. We have vetted it with Jeffrey's Arboris Forester. And I'd like to ask the board to approve that and allow Ruben to enter into an agreement with New England Forestry Consultants. So I make a motion that we waive the purchasing requirements for forestry services for the district. The contract would be, I think, $8,000. I'm sorry, $8,000 plus another 2,500, so under $11,000 to manage our properties and our land out on Route 202.
And I would second that, having reviewed the RFP and response from the bidder. It seems like a really good response. As Laurel mentioned, it was vetted by the Jeffrey Town Forester. And, yeah, despite only having one bid, I think that it's a very good bid and very sound.
Okay, so we've got a motion to waive the need for three bids. Go with the one we have. It seems reasonable. It's been vetted. Discussion on this? Okay, seeing or hearing no discussion, I'll go straight to a roll call vote. Charlie? Pardon?
I think that was a yes.
Was it? It, it didn't, I didn't understand.
You don't look at my eyes. Okay, yes, please, yes.
Thank you. Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you, Patty.
Yes.
Thank you, Heidi.
Yes.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
And I say yes as well. So that passes 7-0-0. And Ruben?
Yes.
You can enter into that now.
I can now cut some trees down. Yeah.
There you go. Or manage them.
Okay.
Come up, come up with plans anyway.
Yes.
Oh, plans, okay, right, right.
All right, on to the finance. Yes.
Can I just ask a question about the review on the architectural RFP that is going to start on Monday? Ruben, thank you for scheduling that, getting that set up. I know it was a quick turnaround. Is there a way that we can access those bid responses before Monday? Just so we know what we're looking at.
Yeah, I've told the people that I asked that I would get it by midweek this week. So tomorrow's my goal. Wednesday would be the late. I'm, I've asked, I don't have copies of them, so I'm trying to get them right now.
Okay, thanks.
I, I believe I'll be able to get them by tomorrow and then I'll scan them out and send them out to everybody.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Oh, yep. Go ahead. Marcy, can I just ask Laurel or the facilities committee a question? I noticed that the upper field is looking really awful.
Yes.
And I know we had talked before about kind of trying to take advantage of this time when, you know, during the stay-at-home order, getting that field, you know, attention, and it's got all these burn spots.
It's a, so we issued an RFP for proposals for the athletic field.
Yeah.
The, all the athletic fields. We had one respondent, and it was of such a magnitude that we were not comfortable with it. So we have asked the administration to query possible respondents, why they didn't provide proposals. What about the RFP made them not respond so that we can revise it and reissue it?
Okay. In the meantime, though.
In the meantime, yeah, I was down there, I was down there the other day and saw that as well. And so we'll be addressing that. I saw, I was playing tennis down there and then looked over on the very nice surface that we, very good.
When, when we lose one?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. I looked, I looked at the field and it's like a patchwork.
Yeah.
There is no irrigation in the upper field.
There is, I've heard. I know, I mean.
Really?
Ruben, is that correct? No, my husband coaches soccer and they said that there is. And my daughter went there the other day and she was like, oh my word, the field looks awful. So.
Right, well, I, I'm, I can't remember if there's irrigation or not to.
There is.
I think that there is. Yeah.
They seem to think, I think someone else said they thought it was an issue with the irrigation, that something wasn't working.
I'll, I'll definitely look into that further. It was on my mind to do anyway because I saw that and thought, that doesn't seem quite right.
No.
At the very least, we, that sprinkler is out there.
Yeah, very sad looking. And who knows? I mean, I know a lot of question marks about what sports are going to be this, this fall. But I think it would be such a shame to lose this time when it's not, you know, being used and to try to rectify what's going on.
Sure.
So anything else for facilities? Or moving on to finance?
Finance, finance has not met since last time. And we probably won't be meeting for a while. Our next scheduled meeting is September, although we may get together before then, depending on the orders report and year-end district financials.
All right, very good. Thank you. Policy, Alicia?
Yeah, and so we met again in July. We have been working through the J policies. Right now, we've been kind of going through our existing J policies and comparing with the NHSBA recommended policies. Our attention has really been focused largely on policy recommendations from the NHSBA specific to gender diversity and making sure our policies are up to date with non-discrimination. So that's taken a significant amount of work and that is still ongoing. We're also working on revising, we're trying to merge two policies that have very similar routes. One talks about educational manifest hardship and then educational placement. So Nick has helped us with some different formatting options just to make sure that both routes are very clearly explained within the policy. So we are not meeting again in July due to travel plans, but we will be meeting in August.
Right, thank you very much. Any questions for policy?
Thank you for your work.
All right, very good. And we're on to goals. Or Patty? Yes, the goals. So John and Charlie and Ruben and I met. Can everyone hear me? Can't see me. So we met very recently and went over all of the goals. And you have in front of you are the updates that we received from administration and other comments. We have made progress in a number of areas. Nick, can you scroll farther down? I'm hoping that everyone had a chance to read this in advance because I won't be reading it. There's two components. So the policy for board assessment requires us to, since we have goals and that's part of our mission, we also want these goals to be assessed quarterly, which we are doing and have achieved. That's definitely been happening over the last number of years. And we would also like the board to consider, in addition to reviewing each of these goals personally and agreeing or disagreeing with how much, you know, movement we've made towards accomplishing them, we'd also like the board to consider other aspects of our charge, which is, you know, how have, do we, do we demonstrate vision, accountability, responsiveness, advocacy for our community in terms of our educational community. So first and foremost, we wanted you to take a look at these goals. This is, I would consider a first read on it. And, and then get back to me with any questions about goals or pose them now. That's fine, but that might be exhaustive and it's 9-19. And then there are, or ask Ruben, and we can follow up at the next board meeting for approval of these, of this, I guess, review of the goals document. So there's that aspect of it. The aspect of it that I just mentioned, which is more of a introspective board governance. board governance kind of thought process, which is slightly different. And saying, you know, are we structured appropriately? Which is what Marcia is working towards moving us along this year, which could be a goal of ours in next year. Are it, can we demonstrate or do we feel as though we have been advocates for our learners and, and community members? Are we, do we demonstrate vision? I think that's a good practice for us to look at as well. Sort of a little bit of navel gazing in terms of are we doing what we said we would do when we were elected to represent our communities in, on this board? So that's part two of this. We spelled this out a bit in the minutes, so if you've read the minutes, then you're up to speed already on that. Then the charge going forward would be to set new goals. And new and/or continued goals that are sort of moving towards completion or maybe were derailed from COVID or just taking a bit longer time because it's part of the strategic design. But say, for example, the strategic plan is a goal and that will probably be a goal for quite some time. And so we, in thinking about goal setting and, and really the analysis of it throughout the whole year, the committee feels that there's a lack of connectivity, if you would, between the Goals Committee, which is just three board members and Ruben, determining whether or not we've made progress or not, and the committee structure of the board. So say, the Education Committee could incorporate the goals that are more aligned with education in their overall work of the year. And so that that committee could feed information up to the Goals Committee to incorporate into the review. Same with finance. And there's a lot of these that could quite nicely be connected. So that's something that we'd like to consider going forward, which is also structural as part of the board. And ultimately, we'd like to see some connectivity with the actual schools and the administrations, which is something that we'd like to talk a little bit more about at the retreat. Just it sort of as a informative, you know, oh, it's not sort of an, oh, by the way, the school district, school board has these goals. But how do we see that progress as a community, not just the board goals? These aren't just the board goals. These are, are all of our goals, which we're all working to achieve. And so we'd like to sort of bring some connection and coalesce that into a more, much more synergistic approach. Any thoughts?
I think that sounds terrific. And I think that committees feeding the Goals Committee or supporting the goals in their work is an extremely good idea.
Well, and I think this will take a bit of time. So while I wouldn't say this is a goal for perfect, you know, implementation over the course of the year, it was identified that the Goals Committee should spend a good amount of its time, you know, with a little bit of time in July, August, September, set the goals by, you know, there's a time, because these are also tied with Ruben's goals as well. So all of us have to kind of gel together quickly, but deliberately, deliberately. So then we would meet quarterly after that and we would, we have those dates. Marcia has those dates and we could work better to communicate intercommittee, I think.
If I can jump in, I'd like to say Patty's been doing a great job of, you know, leading our effort on this and putting together all of our thoughts and notes. One thing that, if you looked at the notes to the minutes from our last meeting, we did talk about, as Patty just mentioned a minute ago, asking the staff, the principals, the other members of the school administration, if they have any thoughts on what our goal should be or any input they'd like to share. So we are hoping that we'll have a moment to put that question to staff during our retreat on Thursday.
All right. Any other comments for the Goals Committee? All right. Thanks very much and look forward to looking at these a bit more later this week.
Thank you.
Um, communication?
I can take that one if.
You're gonna take that one, Nick?
So between, I guess, mid-June to now, we almost have the contract signed for the website bundling service that should hopefully be done early this week. So that's obviously the big item. Again, just in summary, hopefully by next school board meeting, we will have a slightly altered communication screen, stream for Zoom, meaning that we'll be able to put the folks that are speaking, the board members, administrators, et cetera, in kind of one room. And then we'd have a webinar feature where the public could tune in, which would hopefully alleviate some of these issues and people muting themselves, me having to unmute, just so that we have a better flow. And then the Communication Committee is working to put together a meeting in July. It'll be, we have a poll out right now, but it'll be mid to late July where we're going to go over the communication plan, see kind of how we did over the past year, what could be potentially added and just to move forward with that.
Right, great. Thank you. Anything for the Communication Committee?
You mean, well, do you mean wellness, Marcia?
No, I wanted to see if anyone had questions.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Before we moved on to wellness, yeah. Okay, wellness.
Yeah, wellness, but just that we have our meeting date set for August, so nothing really happening this summer.
Okay, thank you very much. We're on now to public comments, too.
All right. So again, just to remind everybody, three ways to communicate. Raise your hand through participants tab, which give you the ability to actually speak. You can text 603-933-0973. You can also use the chat feature and first and last name and your town of residence, if you would.
At this point, we have none?
Nope.
Okay, that's fine. So Board Matters, I think some things have already been said, but just, you know, like worth repeating. One being the Ad-Hoc Committee that's going to be looking at what, what does the beginning of the school year look like or this school year? We had several board members who were interested in being on that, but we have to be careful that we don't exceed three at the main meetings. So there are subcommittees that were, that was already mentioned earlier, too, that people are welcome to jump on as long as, again, we don't have, you know, four. So if we spread ourselves, spread the love a little bit among the board members on these subcommittees. So I'm going to ask if Charlie and John and Heidi, if you would be the ones who do the main meeting? And Laurel, I know you had said you would like to work with a subcommittee because of the work you're doing on the facilities and stuff. So if we can do that and then there may be other people who are interested in jumping on a different subcommittee or whatever. And again, the dates are the 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd from 5:30 to 7:00. Those are the, the large group ones where we just have to be careful of our numbers there. Um, and then under Board Committee, the process and procedures just took one more step. We now have like some descriptions that are in draft form, saying kind of this is what this committee is about. So I don't know if anyone at this point has read through and wants to comment or if they want to think about it some more comment or if those drafts work.
Where, where are the drafts?
On the link.
The link on our agenda?
Yeah.
It is.
Oh, I see.
Beg your pardon?
Did you do these?
I did initially one or a couple of them a while ago, when we first started, a couple of months ago. But they've been modified and simplified, standardized.
I think they're a good start. I mean, we haven't had it written down before. I think it's a good start.
So, I mean, they're there. I think if people want to read through them and, you know, I think actually, Nick, you're the one who was kind of collecting.
Yeah, so essentially what we did is, in an early document, Marcia put together some descriptions. Ruben also did some work on some descriptions and he kind of created a formula, which you'll, you'll see if you read all of them, they stick to a pretty decent formula. So I think the idea is if any of the individual committees have some changes, I think that obviously like feel free to, you know, reach out to me and, you know, maybe I can help incorporate that into something to finalize it. But I guess do understand also that at this point in time, we are working with kind of a text template of kind of making them all sound very similar in nature.
Yeah, the structure of the description is similar, the content changes. So I think if maybe even within the committees, if you have a look at those, have a quick discussion about it and then get back to Nick with, you know, if you have suggested edits or anything or. Does that, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, then when I hear back from all five committees, I'll create a, you know, second draft. We can look at it, finalize it, and then we can put these up on the website with the actual committee information we have.
Right. Um, yes. So, so if all five committees, even if it's like, that's fine, don't, you don't, we don't need anything changed. You can just let Nick know that.
And four.
All right. So the CTE Task Force. There have been a few of you who said, who have written and said, I'm going to jump in on one of these. I just, a couple of them have already gone by, but there is one more. It is tomorrow. So I don't know if people have attended and want to say a couple of things about it or maybe we hear that and Heidi, I think you did.
I did. 29th? I went on the, on the 25th. It was just me and the researcher, Amanda Trainer, and a school board member from the Salem School District. And I think you probably all read the flyer that Amanda had sent out. And know that in schools that have CTE programs in their school building, 75% of the students who attend CTE classes do so in a host school. So the barriers are transportation, scheduling, funding, those are all, you know, known barriers. I can't say, it was, it was a nice talk. Nothing very new came up beyond that as barriers, other than, well, Salem has a phenomenal program. They just went through a huge renovation in their school and they have, you know, many different programs and it's, it's very well attended. They have several schools that filter in and take kids who take classes there. The school board member from Salem said she feels there's still perhaps a situation where the mindset needs to change and that there's still some stigma attached to students who take CTE. But really, that, that needs to go away because these classes, they're of great purpose for students, no matter what their pathway is, once they leave school. So again, I, the purpose of the, this study was to gather information from various stakeholders. And she wasn't super clear about what, she, I can't say she wasn't clear. I asked her, you know, what is, what is the end goal and what, you know, when will we learn what the result of the study is? And the final draft is supposed to be done in November or December. She wasn't exactly sure how it was going to be reported back to school districts, which she was going to find out, so I can follow up on that. And basically, they're just trying to hear from everybody, see if there can, are some changes that can be made so that more students have access. They're going to take a look at what other states do to see how they address getting kids into these programs. And, you know, beyond that, I don't, I didn't get the sense there was, there's a lot of thinking. It seems like something that would, would be very dependent on funding to expand programs for places, for schools like ours, to get more students able to take those classes. I mean, they're pretty difficult barriers to get past. The scheduling is huge. And getting to and from a host school is, is an issue. So that's my report.
So if there is one more tomorrow, if people want to jump in and.
I'm, I'm signed up for tomorrow.
And I am too. Great.
And I also participated in one of these sessions on the 25th of June. And I would say that Heidi's summary is, you know, just about what I found. They're doing a survey. I think the woman's name is Amanda Trainer. And apparently they were hired, it's a group hired to try and gather information on how to improve the system.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you. Onto future items. The biggie is what lies ahead.
I would like to propose a future item.
Yes.
Perhaps for the first meeting in August. So December 9th, we accepted the recommendations from the Health and Wellness Committee formed with JREA and the school board and the administration. And some of those action points are facilities related. But many of them are professional development and administrative practice related. And I don't want to lose sight of those. And wonder if we could have some feedback from Ruben on if any of those recommendations are going to be adopted. So there are things like, some of them are simple.
Or CPI training.
Yes, that's, that's one. That's not so simple, but that is one of the recommendations.
Well, it's simple in concept. It's.
Yeah.
Vulgarizing. That's an example.
Recommendations for some things that should be incorporated into the staff handbooks. Procedures for, written procedures for what to do when a student really acts out. Those are some of the things that are really in the hands of, I'd say, administration that the school board is not going to be able to tackle and the Facilities Committee is not going to be able to tackle.
Any other future items? Okay. Well, I want to check in again then with Nick and see if there's been any public comment.
I don't see anything.
All right, very good. So it looks like we've come to the end tonight.
We adjourn.
Oh, lovely.
What time are we meeting on Thursday?
Oh, thank you.
Nine. Yeah, sorry, nine. We're thinking like nine, hopefully before 3:00, but block out nine to three.
We'll get something in email before, right?
Yeah.
Directions.
Do we have a facilitator?
I think. I think Ruben, myself, and Charlie are meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
It is us, yes.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. See y'all.